All right, I'd like to call to order our board meeting tonight. Let's go ahead and stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'd like to welcome everybody that's joined us online. It's not quite the crowd that we have a lot of times, but appreciate everybody being here. And in the mid to end of summer, it feels weird to say end of summer, but it kind of is getting close to the end of summer.
Not temperature wise.
Not temperature wise, but school wise, right? So, welcome, everybody, and we'll just jump right in. Do we have any agenda changes that anybody would like to recommend? We didn't have a work session, so I don't think we have anything. The minutes, did we have any comments on minutes? Or personnel questions? Okay, anything on the finance side of things? Do we have a report today or anything like that?
No, so actually Devin has gone to, so he's enrolled in the new Business Manager Institute. And, you know, when I was starting, I went to the new superintendents institute, and this is through OASBO, and so he's attending that this week, so.
Where's that at?
Is it in Bend?
Hopefully, it's a little cooler for you. But it's probably not a lot.
There too.
Yeah. Yep, it's it's hot all over, so. Okay, so I need a motion to approve approve consent items.
I need a motion to approve that consent items.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
I.
All right, so we'll move on to the reports and recognitions. Board bits, let's start with it. Director Melinda, do you have any?
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to turn it on or it won't hear you.
To the board retreat in Bend, so it was a great, you know, conference for me just to learn more about the board of directors of the school district, but I just took some notes down that I could just kind of talk about a little bit, but one of the things I took away was was the the family engagement. They were talking about not checking up a box, tell we how we're thinking, how we're one of the things I took away was it was there was a gentleman that had a book and I took a picture of the book so we could hopefully I could share with the group, right? And they can read it, but he was he was a Native American, predominantly Native American school that was having a hard time with attendance and the families being involved or whatever in the schoolwork and and it was a meeting, like a mediation between the school district and the parents and the gentleman that that was there to help figure out what problems they were dealing with. He asked them, there was like one side against the other side. We asked the Native Americans what their word was for welcome. And he said they were all looking at each other. They didn't really know what they didn't really, they were kind of like talking with amongst each others, but they couldn't come up with the word. They said that they didn't have a word that represented welcome, you know, and this is a Toppanish, Washington area. That that the only way they didn't want to say welcome was a saying in their language, in their Native American language, and it said, our hearts are happy because you are here. So then what it did was it gave them, it gave them a better like outlook on how to like create connection with these with these families and students. And that within another year, they had turned around the attendance rates and kids were going to a better school. So that really resonated with me and the stuff with me and, you know, just to like that, you know, that we continue that here at the school district and then just, you know, how we're being involved, vision, every family, every teacher, every child, every day. You know, that when a child does well and is safe, it feels loved, you know, that they're they're successful. So this is like, yeah, the one that I took away that I really like, and I'm pretty sure we're doing here already too, but I spoke about anyway, was like barriers to college credits and going to college. And then they talked about the brothers they had, I think the Blue Mountain Community College with the schools in the inner mountain school district with the dual college credits, the sponsored dual credit classes. And then I just wrote down, every fair already knows his name, but the Eastern Promise. And incentivizing teachers for dual college credits, so incentivize.
Yes.
Yeah, and I guess that adds a lot more work to to the teachers, right, education.
Yeah, so that's a trick one you to to be able to teach those dual credit classes, you have to have a master's degree. And but some colleges also allow you to work around that. And so I know we work with OIT is one of the, and they do the approval process for that. But we would love to maybe come back this fall as as school gets started and have the high school present what they, all of the things that we do, it's easy, I mean, we see it, but then it's it's a little bit hard to understand the different, you know, call credit versus something else. So if if we could this fall, I'd like to put that on the agenda and let them share out with you all everything what we're doing.
Yeah, Eddie, as you learn more and get deeper into it, you'd be surprised just how many programs they have and the focus they have on what I call marginalized people. That's what they do with the different, with children, what they do with migrant kids, and those programs are amazing. Yeah, they're so good about getting funding. And really, every single one of them is a counselor. And it's not like I thought counselors, even though I have one, it's not, oh, here's where you should go to college. It's taking the place and what's going, what's going on. Nikki's amazing with that. And the focus on diversity, equity, inclusion is more than just the speak. Yeah, it really is. It's pretty solidly established, right?
We pay, so any student that wants to take a college course, any of our students, we pay for it. And they can take as many as they want, but also.
You'll be talking a thousand into the issue.
But we also talk about and encourage obviously students to enroll in some of our CTE programs if college isn't the direction they want to go in. We want them to be involved in 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 some of these other programs and so most definitely. And then we also have just hired a gal who will come on this fall, and she has worked for the community college in California for the past 15 years. And wanted to move up here and she has helped. She, so while she was there, she worked with, I think, 26 high schools and made those connections between the community college and those high school programs and earning credit. So we're very excited to be able to to bring her on to help forge more of that, those relationships and what our kids need, so.
And yeah, thank you for that. And then just like Matt was coming up, you know, equity and inclusion, just some of the stuff I took away was like equity is messy, dirty. Get your feelings hurt, that's what they were, you know. And then with the latest political climate, you know, like the far left and the far right, the kids are in the middle and then let the data speak for itself. Those are just things that I was writing down like.
Yeah, yeah.
Support your superintendent, superintendent, and you know, it was just a lot of things that I, but I'm glad, I'm grateful that you sent me and I learned a lot and bring that back to the.
Yep, great, we're able to go to that. We get experience, learn a lot.
I attended the family fiesta and I saw you there too. It was incredible. Those, the program, everything, everything. I was carrying my umbrella and my chair and there was no need. There was shade and chairs and dancing. It was excellent. Thank you so much. The only best thing was that I wanted to see the whole program, so I just sat there and I couldn't move. I enjoyed it so much. No.
Oh, my God, it must have been good.
No, yes, the children, it was beautiful. Thank you so much.
Yes. Yeah, the opposite of like I took me, Natty Salana went to all the stands, there we, every, every stand that was there, so she got to play with everything. And then we went to the cafeteria to eat, so. I didn't see hardly any of the dancing. I'm jealous.
Yes.
Matt, did you have? And I don't have much of a report either. I've been been out of town quite a bit for personal and for work here the last little while, so. I haven't been able to engage too much right here recently, so. Yeah, yeah.
The other one I forgot was to, I attended the, I gotta share my story with the summer camp.
Yeah.
So that was really meaningful to me as well. Gonna tell the kids why I'm so involved in the community and where I came from. You know, and so I think it was really great just to be there as well with those kids. I think some of the, after I was not speaking, I think a lot of kids that were there that they felt the connection to me, because they came up and they were asking more questions. But there was one kid that I still want to meet with and mentor. I can't remember his name, but I said, Blacka, pictures, hopefully I can connect with that years later, just and because he had, there was no one to connect with him because some of his family, I used to mentor through the juvenile, you know, so I just really want to see him be successful and that connection with him, but.
We'll figure out.
Oh, yeah, we just have to give it to all this.
Yeah.
Thanks, Eddie. Okay, so finance report, we don't have Devin here today. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Um, no, just that, you know, we're rolled over, our year's rolled over, so new fiscal year starts in July for school districts and so we're we're good with that and and Devin is coming right along. I I went into his office the other day and he has a whiteboard that he had moved from one wall to the other and I I started to walk out because I put something on his desk and I had to turn around and there's just all of these budget codes and numbers and, you know, just getting the lay of the land of of how our budget codes work. And also, he's finished all the the series of courses and our, as he says, our system is pretty intuitive and lots better than the one he came from, so he's excited about that and I'm really now, I think, feeling better as he's learning our systems, but again, if there's any financial questions, don't hesitate to to ask me or or him and we'll be happy to.
And so does. And we'll just go ahead and write in the superintendent's report.
Um, so we are, as I, we were kind of visiting as people were coming in earlier and I was saying that this is kind of like our our dead week or last week before principals come back and things get super busy and and we do a ton of planning. We are working on wrapping up hiring. I talked to Eric today. He's at a conference right now and he said he was able to connect with, obviously, it's for HR directors across the state and he's that he was able to sit in classes and connect with them. And he said, you're all feeling the same pressures, the same pressures of finding, to find people. And well, so we're still looking for science teachers at the high school. And we're still looking for, I believe, a maybe a middle school language arts and social studies. I haven't checked in this week to see if they've made any progress on that, so. You know, it makes us nervous. Either way, we'll we'll figure out how to to make it work and I I I feel really bad. I know that there's people that are in a lot worse you know, shape than we are in. And I've heard from other superintendents that they're using, utilizing some online courses, unfortunately, to have to teach some kids. Oh, we're looking for a Spanish teacher. And so.
For the high school.
Yeah, so we'll, we will make it work and I know principals are working on that right now and and but it's it's everywhere. It's it's just everywhere. So we're working on wrapping that up. And then we were finally able to roll over, put in the new calendars, right? It's a, so going to a compressed calendar meant you had to go through every single group. So you had to go through, and this is what secretary one's calendar looks like. This is what your custodial calendar looked like. This is what your, what your pick calendar looks like. And so it was a really having a couple of meetings to, the the big thing is, is we needed to make sure that we were not having cut and pay. But then what days do they start? Like staying under that, you know, if it's a classified employee staying under that 40 hours per week. But when do they start in the school year? When do they end in the school year and things like that? So you have to go through everyone and it's complicated, but it worked out, actually worked out better than I thought it was going to. I think sometimes we overcomplicate those things in our head, but it was just, we just had to go over and over it, make sure we had it right. And so we'll still be working a few minor things out as we go forward, but so far so good. It's pretty good.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about the compressed calendar? Are you guys, does it seem to be helping recruitment? Anecdotally, obviously, it's not, I mean, we don't have a ton of data to show yet, so.
Um, but there were people who weren't planning on applying, but in they, we heard it from them, them when they said, when I found out you were going to afford a week, I decided to.
That they went.
Yes.
Good, because that was, that was one of the major reasons that we we considered it.
No doubt. And our hopes are that it's going to really help. Obviously, and I know Director Melinda's asked about this, and I have one thing I didn't mention last time when I was talking about this was another advantage to this, hopefully, is substitute teachers. And we are still operating at less than 60% of of the total substitutes that we had as before pre-COVID. And so we're really hoping that that helps maintain those, you know, that we have books there. So, um, so yes, most definitely, we have heard from people. I think it will continue as as more and more word gets out or earlier in the school year, you know, some people, what what we've also heard is, there are just those people who once they commit to something, they want to commit early, they don't want it, they didn't want to have to decide in June to leave their district. So I can see us doing some more having more people come over now that they know and it'll be earlier on in the school year.
And then the second question I had is, have you had any, as you're going through schedules and kind of getting ready to roll this out, has there been anything that was unexpected challenges or unexpected benefits or any surprises either way, as you've kind of started rolling out this new?
You know, not, not so far that I can that I can think of. I mean, it's, I mean, I'm sure we will, but at this point, no, like I said, I, the actually scheduling worked out better than I thought we could, would. For example, I was a little worried about our instructional assistance and having them work, but in the end, we get them for a full day on a on a Friday while we only have kids for half a day. So now we have opportunity to have trainings for our classified staff, which we've not had before. So that's, I guess, I guess, you could say that that was a benefit. That turns out that, and what we could possibly do also on those Friday afternoons is we could possibly even have some small groups of students on those Friday afternoons, those that we really, really need some extra help and do a few small groups and have IAs work with with them as well. So I wasn't sure.
Debate or go perform at theater.
Yeah. And I, we just weren't sure if we're going to be able to have them all days on those days. And as it is, it does work to our advantage. So, yeah.
So you'll probably hear that question over and over again over the next little while.
I'm glad. No, and I, you know what I'll do is I'll try to do a little report out in my report every month, because we do, this is something that's important.
Right, we need to monitor, make sure that things are going well.
And it'll be a little while and we'll have to figure out how we're going to analyze the data on that. For example, we're going to want to look at student attendance data. I know how we can look at that, but we also want to monitor our employee attendance.
Right, yeah.
We want to, we want to really take a look at those and and then share those, share those things out. So that'll be important. Thanks for asking that. And yes, we do, we'll try to do that every month.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
And the other thing I have here is, so I know it seems really soon, but I do want to give you just a quick update. So I had two, I set two goals back in February, March, I guess March is when the board approved them. And goal number one was to continue to develop an effective cooperative and trusting relationship that cultivates a return to proper dignity and courtesy between the superintendent, district administration, and school board members. And they're, they're pretty much underneath those, it talks about adhering to each body's duty, duties and responsibilities. Communication between both parties is civil and respectful and and providing accurate and consistent information, those kinds of things. And so as far as goal number one, I I feel like things are going really, really well. I feel like that we're in a really good spot and I feel like we're getting better every month. So I I put examples, our regular correspondence between us, work sessions that have been really on track and and productive. And I talked about even things like our, like, for example, our board, our board, our budget goals, how they align with our, with the board's strategic goals. One example that I put as part of, actually, both of these goals was was even the compressed calendar and working through that process and and asking difficult and challenging questions, but but I thought it was in a productive way, so.
Well, there is no question that the last few months have been.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and this, and goal number two is the superintendent will positively promote the district and its operations, communicate and engage appropriately with one, with one another, and encourage constructive dialogue and feedback by all stakeholders. So obviously, the compressed calendar seemed like to be a huge topic of that, those workings. As we reached out to families and got feedback from families, we reached out to community, feedback from community, feedback from staff, teachers. And I thought the board had really good discussion on those, on those things, gathered information and then coming back and creating a calendar that you asked for, of what that would look like and how that would play out. I would also say as part of this, we have really good media representation. I feel like we have a lot of information that does go to our local media. We have a lot of our social media communications is strong, whether it's celebrating something or it's letting the community or what parents know about what's going on. So not, not, also informative. And then every month I've tried to provide you in my report, a visibility update on all the things, well, not all, everything I attend, but a good representation of the things that I'm attending so that I don't have to, you guys can see that monthly. And and then, obviously, we are, we have the district advisory committee that will continue, I'm actually just was today putting together a schedule for the upcoming school year. And then, and we are just starting to prepare and that's part of Jody and her position. But as part of the integrated guidance, which means we're we're taking all of those different grants and everything that we do and merging them together. And they've given us some guidance on how to go out and provide, get, gather community input. And so we're preparing, I guess, you can kind of call it a community input campaign. And so we, Jody and I attended a meeting last week. And we came back and she was, she was talking about all kinds of of ideas. What we don't want to have happen is that you have so much and you keep asking, 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 but it gets so watered down because people are tired of answering. But we want meaningful, that meaningful connection and celebration and input. And so she's been brainstorming some different ways and then talking to the state and getting their feedback on what we need to do and what that's going to be like.
So something we've talked about a lot, and I actually just jotted this down as some that I was going to talk about for future meetings and maybe on the agenda in future meetings, is we've talked, the boards talked about doing listening sessions ever since I'm on the board and that might be need to do a listening session, the COVID and everything else. I think we're at a point now that maybe in our next meeting, we can discuss that and pick a date and as part of that, this community input campaign that you're doing, we could incorporate a board listening session into that.
And as part of our evaluation.
Right, it's part of our, I mean, it's part of our duties as a board to get that community in, but so I, we'll put it on here for, as at the end, we'll, we put on this additional topics for the next one, but I think it it's time that we do that and incorporate that.
But especially, I think, too, it's going to be good after we get the school year going and we see how these four day, the compressed calendar rolls out.
Input back on how families are feeling about that.
Got it. If there's still barriers, things like that. So, no, that's great. Um, is there anything that, any recommendations that you have for me? Is there something else that you would like to see from me? In this that that, is there a way that I can share? I mean, I think for for these reasons, they're pretty self explanatory. I mean, I try to, I'm trying to, what we're trying to put in front of you is so that you don't have to do the checking up at the very end of the goals, but I'm trying to feed it to you throughout the school year. So when you get there, you are the know, right? So. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is very clear.
Yeah, and I think just continue on with the, with what you're doing. Keep us up to date on on those events that you're going to. I think, I think that's, that's, it really is a big deal, I think, and the community seeing you out and about.
Yeah.
And as school gets started, there's going to be plenty of opportunity, more than what you can do. I mean, like we talked about. And if you're with Matt, you'll talk to all sorts of people because everybody knows Matt.
And I appreciate seeing some of you with that. I know we had a Friday, we had a luncheon for our Bino National teachers who were finishing up and Lady and Eddie came to that and Blacka came to that and Annabelle wanted me to come down and.
Because you, hi.
I do plenty of that. And so it was, it was really a nice send off and we'll definitely miss them, but what an amazing opportunity that we were able to have by having five Bino National teachers, six, seven, six Bino National teachers here to teach our kids. And so it was very, very exciting. So and then Annabelle, with that, I'm going to say what you, I know you wanted to share something.
We have the Oregon Migrant Bishop Institute happening this week and next week at Trisha Rowley Community College. So if you are available tomorrow at 8:00 AM, let me know. I'm going over at that time and having breakfast with with the whole group. Tuesday morning is a good time to go and visit. There are other opportunities, so you can't make it, but you would like to stop by, just send me a quick email and I'll find the schedule and sort of tell you what's what's an appropriate time to go visit.
You're going at eight?
Yeah, at 8:00 AM tomorrow, early. Meet me at TBCC at the West Village.
I'm kidding. The TVC.
Yeah, yeah, 8:00 AM. And we do have, these are high school students, this is a high school cohort. We have students from Ontario, Nisa, and Intermodal, ESD this week and the same this week. Funded by the state. Yeah, just to see what they're, at that time, they're just eating breakfast, but it's a good time to say hi, find these Ontario students and and see what what it's like so far to be there. They checked in yesterday, very, and they'll be there until Saturday.
Yeah, just if you want to call me, I can look at the schedule and tell you where they are.
And they're gonna be there next week too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, would you quickly explain what, what it is and what the, the kinds of activities they do and why?
I was looking at my calendar.
Yeah, so Amli has been going on in Oregon for decades and we've had it here locally for the past maybe five years. And it is for middle school and high school students. And the goal is to really, um, teaching, teaching them. All about self-identity and valuing their culture themselves, their background. And also empowering them in leadership roles to not only graduate from high school, but also go on. Beyond what, what they would like to do. And it varies. It could be welding, it could be, uh, aviation. It could be that they want to be a pediatrician. So just, just following them throughout high school. Um, after Amli so that they have the tools to, to do that. Um, so it's sort of, um. It's a camp that it's all about leadership, but empowerment as well in acknowledging their identity. And their, their roots as well.
So they go off premises as well?
Yeah, yeah. So they have, they're at TBCC tomorrow. It's the rafting day. Yeah, which I opted out of. I was signed up.
He never attended a camp.
I never did, yeah. Yeah, it is, yeah. Um, anyway, so they're on campus and they live at the dorms. And they have a variety of workshops throughout the day. They have different types of speakers throughout the week. Um, they have, uh, service projects. For the last camp, they went to Reed at Aiken Elementary. They went to. I can't remember where they all went, but there were three groups that went around the community. And, um, they have a talent show. They have, uh, an etiquette dinner at the cultural center as well. And they have a job fair that it's more like a college fair. So a lot of activities, um, happening on campus and off campus as well. But tomorrow they go around fifty.
Right, never have a chance to do.
It just takes one thing to change.
Next year you need to go.
It's so much fun.
Okay, anything else for our superintendent report? Does anybody have any other discussion? Thank you. Uh, public comments? Did we have any public comments tonight? I wouldn't have guessed. Much going on, but you never know. Alright, so we're gonna move into business items. So. Uh, Matt and Eddie, this is your first time kind of going through some of these. There's a whole bunch of stuff that we have to do in July, basically to set us up for the next school year. So we got to. Basically pass all these resolutions just to make sure we have people in places that they need to be and approved by the board as we go into the school year. So. Um, superintendent, remind me, do we need to read each one of these resolutions and vote on it? I can't remember how we did this.
Yeah, I believe in, in, um, right, way in, but I believe we can group. So for example, if you wanted to group. Uh, resolution number one, one through fourteen, those are your housekeeping resolutions. Um, I think you can call them by number without reading each one. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Could carry you.
You could do resolution twenty.
I think I saw you shaking your head, yes.
Twenty-two, one through fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. So as long as everybody feels comfortable with that and they've had a chance to look at those resolutions. I would entertain a motion to approve resolutions twenty-two dash one through twenty-two dash one four. Okay, we have a motion. Eddie has a second.
All favoris are pretty easy.
Yeah, they're pretty easy. They're pretty straightforward stuff. On favor?
I.
I, I, perfect. That's, that's an easy way to.
And we did it without.
Alright, uh, so, yeah, I must be getting too close to this thing. The next item is the election of the board chair and vice chair. So, uh, that's something we have to do every July. So I would entertain a nomination for board chair.
I'd like to. Propose. Right, or board chair?
Okay, we have a motion to, for me to continue as board chair. Do we have a second? Eighty seconds. All in favor? Okay, and for vice chair, do I have a nomination for vice chair? Sorry, okay, on favor?
I.
I, you're our heroes.
Well, uh. Yeah, I'd be honored to continue on as board chair. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity. Would have been probably the shortest board chair, uh, tenure ever. Like the second meeting I ran, right? No, I'll, I'll pledge to do my best for you guys as board chair and look forward to keep, continue working with everybody. Uh, okay, number sixteen, trip to DC, Annabelle.
I see no value in this.
Is this the middle school trip that they've been doing or is this something different?
This is something different. Yeah, the middle school trip happens during spring break or, uh, for students at the middle school. Um, this is funding that we had, um, available for students. So we decided to, um. Work with forty middle schoolers, seven and eighth graders. And we've been working for them for a couple of months and, um, our grad specialists have been having workshops with them about debating. And policy so that when they go to the workshops in DC, it's very relevant and meaningful to them. Um, it's not just going to the monuments, it's going to learn. So they are actually in a classroom setting a lot of the time. And then they go out and apply that into the environment. So it is forty students. We have five chaperones, five chaperones going with them. Because it's a large group. And, uh, we've never done this many students. So we're more than prepared. We have everything ready. Binders with all the information. They have a T-shirt to travel to and a T-shirt to wear over there as well. Um, so it's very well organized that we don't lose anybody. No, it's just DC.
And this is like program. This coming, like August first. Here, just like a week.
Yes, I will get up at three AM to go drop one batch of kids off at the airport.
And you don't have to get on the plane.
No, I don't get to go.
It is.
Because principals are about hot. Yes, it will be hot and humid. So we're prepping them for that as well.
Yeah, be ready for that. And, uh. Yeah, it rains a lot in DC too. People don't realize that, that part of, yeah. Yeah, and when it rains, it's like thunderstorms.
We have it, we have it in our migrant ed budget to continue this, but we're shifting that to a high school level.
Okay, well, this is a great thing. This is.
Let's see again, another thing they did. And I'm sorry, even traveling to Kansas is transformed. You gotta.
See in new areas, it's a big deal.
For some of our kids going to Boise.
Yeah, I know.
Just opening.
Family vacations at best or at the dam.
Just the opportunity to see another part of the world, what's out there and what opportunities are there. Yep, absolutely.
Plan C for them to be future board members and city council and.
That is definitely part of that. They get to talk to their representatives over there and that's part of that. But we want to plan that seat. Yeah.
Exciting. That's great.
Oh, and we have a list of attendees, huh?
We have a student. Exciting. That's great.
Second, third page. Of the. Student trip.
Yeah, it's on your board. It's on your board. So we need to vote on this? Is that, we need to approve this?
Yes.
So, I need a motion to approve this student trip request for Washington DC trip.
I'll make the motion to approve the DC trip.
Right, same. On favor? Alright, next one, in addition to the uncaught account. Yeah, you probably should have access to that.
He needs to be able to sign some checks.
Sure. Alright, uh, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
In a second. Okay, on favor? Alright, so these are some second readings of policy JFCEB. Do we have any comments or discussions on the second reading of? Let's, let's group JFCEB and JFC. E E A R together. Do you have any discussion on either one of those policies? Uh, no discussion. So I'd entertain a motion to approve policy JFCEB and policy JFCEB A R. I need a motion first. On favor? Alright, and second reading of policy, we'll group these together too because it's an AR with it. It's, uh. JFCG such JFCH slash JFCI and then the, uh. Associated AR JFGAR.
Can I just make a, just a comment?
That's not an, the AR is an associated.
Uh, so when you see that there's three, so you see JFCG slash JF. CH slash JFCI, it's because it's the same policy as in each one of those sections. So. So, so we have some policy that is in multiple sections in. And different topics. So that's why.
And, and this next one, the JFGAR, is that associated with this?
It's in that area, but it's different. There's.
It's a different one. Okay, so we lost.
Yeah.
Okay.
And ARs don't have to be approved, but we usually put them in front of you.
Yeah, the AR is like the.
How to.
How to, right? So I'll entertain a motion to approve. JFCG, JFCH and JFCI.
I need a motion to approve.
Second. On favor? And we have a second reading of JFGRG. This is the AR, right? And we don't have to approve it, but we typically do, right?
Yes.
So this is for the student searches. It's a second reading. Do I have a, any discussion? Make a motion? In a second?
I said.
On favor? Okay, and then we got some first readings. Policy GBL. Which is first reading for. Uh, personnel records. So there was a few changes. They looked fairly minor on this. The only thing I did see is under number seven, there's a bracketed item that says employees or personnel officer. Uh, number seven, yeah. So on those bracketed, kind of how that works is that's kind of the board, whether or not we keep those. We sometimes have a bit of a discussion about that.
Yeah, you can keep it. I would suggest.
Suggest keeping that in. Okay, and then, uh. Thank you for letting me here. I know it's.
The other thing is, is, yeah, and Eric will be back, so he.
And we'll have a second reading also, but. Any other discussion? Um, there's some highlighted that must be that's the news, new text, so. Any discussion on that? Okay, so need a motion to approve the first reading, uh, policy GBL. To include the bracket and include the bracketed information.
For I second.
On favor?
I.
Alright, now we'll move to first reading of IGBL or IGBI. Yeah, this one's pretty, pretty simple, so. Do, this is a super simple one. Do we just want to, I mean, we don't have to go to a second reading.
I'll make him a motion to approve by GP by by.
On favor? That one's pretty simple. Yeah, no reason to bring that one back in front of us. And then the veterans preference, uh. This doesn't have much in terms of changes either. It's a little more.
Mostly, it's mostly, uh, around the laws and stuff. So you'll see that on the bottom, which is where they cite. Like what statute or what.
Right, right. That's mainly the changes, right? Yeah, there is. I think, let's bring this one back. I don't know what you guys, everybody's thoughts. Do we want to bring this back for a second or are we okay? Just go to first on this.
I would be okay.
Yeah, most of the changes are down in like the footnotes, right? They're not really.
Which are our stuff that are.
Right.
Real, though that stuff down there is all related to the law.
And some of these things I always think are silly, but it gets me in trouble. The pronouns versus.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for a final approval of policy GPA AR. Okay, so we'll take Eddie's, uh, motion, motion.
Second.
Matt's second, alright. On favor? And that brings us to the last thing, which is topics for future meetings.
I have listed, um, that we will continue to provide updates for compressed calendar. Um, we won't have, um, data by then because. But we can provide updates if, like we did this time, if we had any unintended consequences to the good or the bad or. Or, or clarifications. Um, I would say, um. Call cred, I have written on there. We can either do that in, in August or we can wait till September or. You want to wait and get into the year a little bit or?
Will we know?
Probably, I'd probably give the, um, I hate to call, I'm gonna be honest, I hate to call on our principals, uh, the week before. And all just add it to, to that, that calendar. Um, I do have the calendar prepared, but I wanted. Which is your year-round calendar that gives you all those dates. The only thing I was waiting on was to have the, um, formal vote for. Chair and vice chair because when we meet, that's it, then we can decide what works best for you. And I like to put those in there just in case, so.
Yeah, I need to talk after this about that because I had some changes to, we're gonna have to figure out, so.
Not a problem. So that's why, but I will, I will have that available for you guys.
Um, I thought I noticed in your report that next month's meeting is on the twenty-second rather than the twenty-nine.
But, um.
I already had it in for the twenty.
No, it's actually the fourth.
Cause there's five Mondays.
So it's not the twenty-nine?
No.
No, it's the twenty-second.
So it's the fourth Monday and that's why I'm gonna give you the calendar. The calendar will tell you.
Cause I would have screwed that up.
So, yeah, and then, um, and then in there I'll highlight the, if there's any months, I can't remember, cause I did it actually a while ago. So. Highlight the months that the fourth Monday maybe is a holiday, and then you guys can.
We'll discuss it. We'll discuss it.
Discuss it and vote. To figure out how you want, if you need to change that, so I'll put that in front of you.
Okay, and the only other thing I had for future meetings is we used, way back when, and we talked about it last year and then with COVID, we just never felt like we should do it, is going to some of the schools. So. For our meetings and actually having those, but there's a couple of things we're gonna have to, we have to have the technology there to be able to do it virtual too because that's required now by public meetings. So I'd like to discuss that in our next meeting.
Um, yes, so I would say, yeah, that would be too much for the schools to handle at the first biggest school, but yeah.
Right, 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 right. Let's just discuss it, maybe pick some calendar days that might work for me.
Now and then, I'll talk with tech to see what their capabilities are.
Right.
Obviously, they're getting.
What's happening with our border?
Yeah, we're, they're getting it in September is the last day, two weeks. But it's like everything else.
I know.
It was, I mean.
I think at one point it was July, right?
We, so this is just how it is.
Right.
We were, what was it, Bob came in to talk to me about an AC unit in our, our middle school went out and to get the new one. I've been running it all installed, March. March. Well, where we have it, I know, well, that's the thing is, and honestly, the other, we talked, we talked about the scenarios and it didn't make any sense, it was either gonna cost us an extra three thousand dollars to get it up and running and we can, we have a, we have a plan B, but but what I'm saying is, it's like everything else in the world right now.
It's just.
It just keeps getting.
The whole world is understaffed and under supplied.
Yes, so. So at some point, but I will talk, talk about our capabilities and being able to, what, what that would look like because honestly, that's that's gonna probably be the biggest challenge.
Right, right. Yeah, but I think it is beneficial to be able to get out to the schools.
I agree, and they love showing off their buildings.
They like showing off their buildings and I think parents that are comfortable being in those environments already, you know, it makes it a little more.
For sure, we actually.
You get some people there that maybe you wouldn't normally.
And when we move towards having those meetings at those, at each school, our board meeting attendance.
Right.
Maybe tripled.
Right.
So we had way more people because their kids were putting on program.
Right.
They were there to show up for that, it was, it was, they're comfortable in their home base.
Right, so. So I'd like to just get that on the agenda and we can discuss that, see if we can, if that's something we can get back to.
Yeah.
In the past, we were assigned to a certain.
Yeah.
I like that, maybe we can rotate.
Yes, I think that'd be good. Let's, let's put that on the agenda next time too, or, and, and I get the benefit of not having a school assigned. But the other aspect of that is, it's really, for me, with my schedule, it's tough to like get out to all the schools. So I know I have one school that I try to visit them a couple of times, trimester or whatever, makes it a little easier.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that you're still representing all, but I think that there is some advantages in being able to get in, especially if you kind of want to learn their systems and get to know them more and all of that, so.
Connection with the principals.
Yes, sure.
Yep, listen to that, I, thank you for mentioning that, I thought about that earlier and. Forgot to, on my notes.
Got it written down.
Okay.
Um, just a reminder that as we go into this next year, student safety is gonna look much different. And it's gonna have to become our new norm. And as we get closer to that, we will be able to provide more information to parents on what that's gonna look like to enter through our school doors and pick up kids and things like that. Um, I don't know, you may not have noticed, so we already have one of the cameras set up out front here, so it's sort of like a, a ring, if you will.
Right, right.
And those will, by the start of school, those will be installed in every school building and then we've been, Mike's been working on a lot of the safety protocols and getting ready to do trainings and stuff, but what it's gonna look like when the doors are gonna be open, when they're gonna close, when, you know, a student shows up late, how, what that looks like, things like that.
Yeah.
And it's important.
And I think, I think the community is gonna understand, I think you're gonna get.
Oh, so I'm glad you brought that up, Blanca, you must know something. So actually, they're working with Mike on scheduling that as well. Yeah, so the state police, they originally had the FBI and then the FBI had to pull back out of that, but they have the state police and they want to come in and do some simulations and work together and provide feedback and things like that. So yeah, it's, that is in the works of being planned as well.
Well, it's good for the, our officers to be in those schools and know what to, kind of know what to expect when they're done in those buildings, right? What the layout is, and maybe they already do know that information, but.
Yeah.
I have no idea, I don't want to, I'm like, they don't, when, you know, somebody on here is going, we know what we're doing.
Yeah, and, and new, new chief, new, new officers coming on and some of these, it hasn't, it hasn't been done.
If there is an incident, they go through those doors, they need to know what's to the left, what's to the right, what's in front of them.
For sure, so thank you for bringing that up, yes, and that's in the works as well.
I'd be, yeah, I'm happy to add that the city council reached to approve the last, the council being the, like ballistic proof vest from officers who I think twenty-eight or thirty vests that are, you know, they could hide, they could, they call it. Protect with a higher capacity round, like a, like a bigger gun, you know, they're able to protect.
Yeah, nice, and we anticipate, I, I mean, I don't know anything, I just recall seeing it on the news as they approved these new policies in the federal government, but I anticipate us receiving some money for school safety. I don't know anything more than that, other than, I don't know how much, what the parameters of spending on that is. I'm assuming that a lot of it will be around maybe funding for, you know, SROs or police presence.
You could get, you could have an SRO on campus at all of our schools.
I don't know that it'll go that far, but it definitely will. I think door hardware is an important piece and we're coming on where we, we need to renew all of our door hardware and that is probably gonna cost us a million dollars.
Thank you all of our buildings. Yeah. That's, even I think the door hardware may be something that where we can lock, you know.
And we have some of those mechanisms, but, but they're just, they, they become outdated, our system can't handle anymore on the load. And so it's complicated, but all things that we are definitely looking at. So when, once I know more about what that's gonna look like, I'll. But for now, we're doing our very best.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Take care of yourselves.
Take the day off before you finish.
Before Monday.
All right.
So you should take off Thursday and Friday.
All right.
You have permission.
Do we have any other items that we need to discuss? Any more comments? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. In a second?
Second.
On favor?
I.
That's always the quickest and easiest. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.